Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd like to start with, uh, Warren and I move, uh, Peter Council, Jordan White and Mark Merdeen. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I'm Mark Merdeen.
I, Jordan Whitner. We solemnly swear.
We solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support. And obey the plan.
That I will support, obey, and defend. I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
The Constitution of the State of Wyoming. The Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly.
That I have not knowingly. That I have not knowingly.
Violated any law.
Violated any law. Violated any law.
Related to my election or appointment.
To my election or. Related to my election or appointment.
For causes to be done by others.
For causes to be done by others. Or cause it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge.
That I will discharge. That I will discharge.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
The duties of my office with fidelity. The duties of my office with fidelity.
You're now. Councilman.
Move both of you. Thanks.
Uh, Kim will have. Kim will have Dr. Presby to sign.
Yeah.
And. Welcome aboard. Thanks, thanks for your. Volunteer to. Be. Come and serve Dallas Shoshone. Let's have the. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the robe all show all its presence when we do have a quorum. Those, uh, that would like to join me in an opening prayer may do so. Oh gracious Lord. We thank you for your blessing. We thank you. And. Guidance. And especially our new council members that have just joined our team. That we make right and good decisions. For our citizens. Of Shoshone who we all represent. In this your name, Lord, I ask. Amen. And I have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll approve the agenda.
Second.
Then moved by Councilwoman Hartley, sent by Councilman Stever that we approved the agenda. Any discussion? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Same motion passed on the affirmative. Uh, we have nothing scheduled for public hearing. Ordinances.
Consent agenda.
Pardon?
You didn't do consent agenda.
Oh, we did that. No communication from citizens. Uh, dissent agenda. And I.
Move we approve the minutes from December seventeenth, twenty twenty four.
I'll second it.
It's been moved that we approve the minutes of December seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Any discussion? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same. Motion passed on the affirmative. Approval of the bill December eighteenth, twenty twenty four through January fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Move that we approve the bills from December eighteenth, twenty twenty four through January fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Move by. Have a second.
I'll second it.
We moved by Councilman Stever to approve the bill December eighteenth, twenty twenty four. January fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Second by Councilwoman Hartley. Any discussion?
Any discussion? Oh, I, I did too, but I thought I saw your eyes. All right. I didn't see.
Any question, discussion?
I, I thought you saw something that.
None being. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same abstain. Okay, we have one of George White here note that Councilman Whitner abstain.
I'm, I'm abstaining because I wasn't a part of the. The bills of that month, so I'm not sure what they are, so I. That was prior. Prior to meeting.
Well, fair enough. That's, uh, that's what the question. Part could have been for getting questions. Yeah, don't notice, don't know it and the reason given. So motion passed only affirmative with one abstention. Now we'll go down no public carrots, uh, nothing on ordinance, uh. Presentations, we have a. Uh, from the Wyoming Business Council, we have a short, little over two minutes. Uh. Presentation. That was presented at a business council meeting at the end. It talks a little bit about. Uh, how the business council direction in this year. Now how that'll in- uh, impact us. It'll, uh. The business council is looking primarily at, at bigger projects. It may be much harder for smaller projects and. Where in the past few years we've been able to get funding that we. Will have a much harder time to. To get funding there. There, uh. Look at, he'll explain it better than I'm doing right now, so. I just wanted to make that. To everybody and, and to our citizens also that can watch this via Zoom. And also to the council. Very, I messed it up, sorry. But I said in a business council meeting that this was presented. And it's, it was. Probably made it full screen, so I'm just not, I'm just gonna play it.
Members of the board, I, thanks for, thanks for the vote, thanks for making through this critically and thanks for.
And it be turned off. Close it. This is.
As size it goes.
Yes, there's no doubt. The, the question that I, that I want everyone to think about. Is this. What role does the state government play in the sustainability and viability of our communities? And how should we play that role most effectively? Now, I believe there is a role and I believe the state's playing a large role in that sustainability and viability and viability of our communities as they are today. The question I have for all of you is, yes, this is not working. But is that another program that we should go about so that we can make sure that the sustainability of their first? And the question I have, this is no disrespect to the ninety nine communities that are in Wyoming. But are our communities utilizing all of the tools that they have at their disposal? In order to make sure that they are self-sufficient enough? And if they are, and the answer is we still don't have enough. That's the conversation we need to have. Because that's the partnership that the communities and the state need to have together. To truly understand the problem at hand. When I see tools that are unused because we're unwilling to tax ourselves. Yet we complain and say to the state, we need money to become sustainable. I find that really, really hard to give my. And I think others do too. There are tools. If they're not used. How can we say it's a state I want to? I don't, there are many networks and a lot of whole things that explains in other ways. I just want everyone to remember. That there needs to be, one, a partnership we can use in state. And two, this problem that we're talking about is actually not going to be solved by a state program. Or, or all of the communities building up their, their sales tax so that they can use it for economic development. It's bigger than that. But if we don't raise that issue. And we don't illuminate the problem that our communities truly face. We're not gonna come to it. Order.
I think that was the end.
Please forgive me, this is the personal.
No, that wasn't the end.
Issue. And we don't illuminate the problem that our communities truly face. We're not gonna come to it. I don't think we should put. The wrapping over it and just frost over it and make everybody feel good. I think we should face these issues. I think we should all exhibit as much leadership as we can. And instead of trying to feel good and utilize state funds that we might have today. I think we should get down to the root of the problem and start talking in real terms. And so I'll leave it at that. That's gonna be my mission. I probably have a lot more work to do. I do something that's appropriate for the business council to represent that to the legislature and to others. I absolutely feel it's not just our. Opportunity. It is our privilege and our responsibility to do so. Thank you.
Take your chances.
But. You catch the. If the towns, okay, I'm gonna bring up the half cent tax we just voted down, the county voted down. Uh, that was a plus in our Fremont County in our favor in reaching out and asking for if we need help because we're taxing ourselves. Uh. They, they, the state is wanting us to pay our fair share, tax ourselves, do what we can, uh. Uh, same go reflects to our water bill. Are we, you know, there's, we've been stepping up every year to Shoshone, yeah. And, and we have been responsible. We've also been successful. And, and, and receiving many grants and that's had played a part of that also. But if we can. You know, uh. Raise funding ourselves. The A, A two A is, uh, we, we're gonna have a, a, have a group. Going down to that and John. Meyer is gonna be part of that's volunteer to help the town and so is Mark. Our Councilman Ordine is gonna be there also. But part, part of that is gonna help us look at other avenues other than the states for grants. Look for federal funding and that's one of the things they're looking at. So we're exhausting. Exhausting all the possibilities, uh, for funding other possibilities and then just going to the state. Uh, the state is looking at some bigger. Projects for the gonna have a big impact on the state of Wyoming. Like the, they have a, they're gonna have a couple of neutron mines south of Green River, Offspring's area. That's gonna create a lot of jobs. The nuclear power plant, out of camera, gonna create a lot of jobs. Uh, there's several others, some. Uh, bringing in some more. Wow. Uh, like Microsoft into Cheyenne is gonna create a lot of jobs. Uh, Evansville just bringing in a, I forget, it's oil field related, I forget what they're doing, repair. Still, it's gonna hire a lot of people. So they're looking at the, the spend their money. The state's money on big projects. That's gonna help the state of Wyoming. They're gonna be focusing on that a lot.
But. I, I wanna be clear and di- differentiate what he didn't do in that commentary or commentary. Was that a lot of the funding that we get, they say it's state funds. There's a difference between state funds and state administered funds. The state receives hundreds of millions of dollars a year in block grants from the federal government to distribute to communities. And he's wrapping that up into one as if it's state funds, which it is not. But that is a serious concern when it comes to. The outlook from the legislature for.
But one thing that's happened now, all of that COVID money and stuff is gone.
It's not just COVID.
So, so, but I mean, but a big, big part, a big part of it was.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, I mean, a big, big part of that. The, a big part of that was.
My concern with that is that. Smaller communities like Shoshone, DuBois, Hudson, Disney Fremont County, um, are gonna be overlooked for a lot of funding opportunities. In favor of bigger communities like Evanston and bigger projects in Cheyenne, Casper, and it's gonna get harder, harder for us to. Get these things, which means we have to find alternative means and pick and choose what we're gonna go after that might not have the same. Matching funds. There might be a lot more difficulty in some of those things administering them and that's what we're gonna have to chase for priorities in fact.
I, I think, I, I believe that communication, if, if we research the federal. If we go up to the federal grants, which that's what we're gonna, that's what we're looking at doing. Uh, with Y gap and the A two A and the economic, the, the. Development that the governor started and our two, you, our senators, US senators. To go after more. Federal fund besides what the state is, is, is getting. You know, they want us to look at all avenues. And, uh, but we come with a need and not a want and we, and we're working hard at other. Uh, other. Means. Uh, they're saying they're still gonna look to help us, but they're. But it's, it's, it's not gonna be quite as easy as it's been for the last couple, three years. Cause there's gonna be a lot less. Federal money available.
Right, but this is.
For the, for the states.
But this is the business council aspect of it.
Right.
Versus other. Types of programs that are not related like water sewer, things of that nature.
Right, correct, correct, yeah, yeah, we still get. Still, yeah. We still apply for water grants and, I mean, we still have that available, but it may, make other things. Harder for us to get. So we gotta be responsible and do what we can to help ourselves. And that's, that's, that's what I'm just in that. But we need to. We need to be doing that and it, I think it didn't make this, you know. If we had a. Say a big uranium deposit that they wanna develop north of Shoshone. And that was gonna create a lot of jobs regardless the size of. Of the town. A project like that could get a lot of fun. But, you know, they're, they're looking at, they're, they're, the business council. Is looking at bigger project.
So it's gonna be very, uh, articulate. Writing to get the needs conveyed. For in the future.
Right. And we just need to be smart. Now, and, and Shoshone, we're, we're, we're doing that. You know, we're, we're doing that. Other communities that. May, may not. Doing that as, as well, and we've done that well. Already, it's just, I just, uh. Thought it'd be, it's important that we can understand where the. The business council, not only us, but for our citizens to know where the business council. Is, is at. For this year. Yeah, yeah, so currently and, and the current. Economic picture, attitude, what's going on.
So I, I would say what we do get is gonna take a lot more work and it's gonna be a lot more, uh, in depth and. Involvement of the council and the community to be successful in these. But I do think that whether we are successful in these things, we pick and choose the ones that are most impactful for Shoshone, it's gonna have the greatest benefit and. Yes.
We, we've done real well with thinking needs not wants. And we streamlined some of our projects to, to do exactly that. And, uh. But yeah, we. We need to continue doing that. That what we, it's very similar what we've done in the past. But that was, yeah, I know, but. Yeah. We got beat up on raising our water bills by, by doing that, that's. We'll say in our share.
Hey Joel.
Any thoughts on what you heard, yes?
Yeah, I just wanna add real quick. Make sure you guys are speaking up. Cause we had that request from a citizen.
You can't hear my voice, something's wrong. I've listened to my voice on here. I can't, I can't never heard one time where you, I couldn't hear me.
Yes.
I'll return the gain a little bit.
Okay.
Pick up more, but. It's also gonna pick up if you whisper. It's gonna be more chance it's gonna be caused. Just be aware of that, okay? It's gonna turn the gain up soon.
Right, you hear the shuffle of the papers if you ain't careful.
So is this the process now where there's? A list that's getting developed or there's a list already or where are we at in that? Needs.
Or we have. We have, we have it, we have a list. Those some pending projects. And, 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 and needs we can. That we have, uh. Uh, we presented a, a list of Y gap. Where we. Uh. Wyoming. Grants, administration. Project.
So a lender?
Yeah.
They have money.
But, but, but anyway.
Work conduit, work group that kind of assists to point, help and highlight projects that we're. Working on and to kind of fine tune and, and find the opportunities for it, basically.
Th- this is a new organization started by the governor late July or August. And it's what they, they have consultants working for them and, uh. The municipality. Can a- apply for projects and they'll review. The project and see if they can help find funding for. And they actually have some consultants and, and they have a multiple consultant that have very different. Uh. Consultants and grant writers and stuff like that have different expertise. So. But they've done that. I've been. In conversation with them. Uh. And sit down meeting, they, uh, they have a, a list, uh. Projects that Chris and I have put together that were, that were currently looking at. Uh. In our. And we gotta finish our Westside project, uh. And multiple things. I'll share, share all that with, with some councilmen. Uh. Share, share our list, but we presented that to them and, uh, Meyer. Had. Our recent correspondence, they're looking at some of the things for us. Uh, right now. Uh. Like I sat in to a meeting a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago. Think I was the one mayor there, so they got to hear a lot about Shoshone. Imagine that. So, but, but they've, uh. And it was sort of. You know, my concern with them, that's. My initial concern was, you know, I only got so many and there's ninety eight municipalities and other people that are also eligible that. You know, and. That they'd be overwhelmed. And by. By applicants, but it's, uh, they're bound in time to take care of us, but we're, you know, we've been in for five months, but it's. It's, uh. But I, I think it's a good thing what they're trying to do. It's just a continuation of what they started with the meetings like we have. We're gonna be another one in April, CWC. You know, that economic summit that, uh, uh, that the governor and the senators put on. Then it's gonna be, it was in CWC last year. First one was in Sheridan we went to and then last year's. Uh, CWC, and that's also on CWC, we've been April, and that's all part of it. You know, so that's, that's, so that's sort of spun off, the Y gap spun off of those meetings. From their saying, what do we need? Well, we need. We need more help chasing these grants, federal grants. So that's, that's what they're looking at. You know, and sort of. You know, Jordan, uh, last year attended a, uh, a meeting that was sort of tied with that. Uh, teamwork for, as a citizen, he, he. Will have to see, as we see, as a member of the council. Their team building. That's all part of that was from the, the, uh. The Harvard group. But that's, that's all team building, helping us. Uh. Uh, be able to learn to chase these, these federal funds. And, uh. And, you know, the governor said, even if we don't like some of the politics and stuff that we're just, uh, assigned to this fund that we're, we're getting. So just hold your nose. If you can help your town, help your state. Take the money instead of letting it go to Montana or Colorado or California. Cause the money's going somewhere. Federal money's gonna go somewhere. And if we can help Wyoming, he suggested that we do. But that's. Wyoming was right to, I think, dead last on receiving federal funds. And so we, a lot of us. Not aware of the funding availability that's out there that would help us. Improve our. Our state. Any other? Thoughts? Do you have anybody in the audience, uh, any thoughts? Uh, online, do we have any? Very good. Uh. I'll get off my soapbox. Resolution twenty four. Zero, one, zero, revenue and expenditures.
Not sure of the new council, uh, there's a memo that was sent out with this. You scroll on your iPad. If you haven't already read the memo, kind of explain it before I read it. If you wanna take a minute to. Read that memo. I can hold off a second while you do so. It'll be towards. What page would be?
Is that the first interstate bank?
No, it's a, it's a town memo. I'm not sure what page it is. It's right after the resolution. In your packet. So it's. It's on town letterhead.
Twenty four dash ten.
Twenty four dash ten.
Oh, one more page.
Yeah, next page, yeah. Two pages. Oh, regarding police vehicle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just. You can rewrite yourself.
It's the backup document.
Or.
To the pages. Resolution.
Yeah. But this is. I don't know, this must have been somebody else's stuff like. Ready, I can read it into the record?
Yep.
Resolution number twenty-four dash zero one zero. A resolution authorizing the increasing of the F Y twenty twenty-five budget revenues and expense for the Towns of Shoney General Fund. Whereas a governing body for the Towns of Shoney passed a budget resolution for fiscal year, I'll change that, twenty twenty-five, including expected revenues and expenditures. Whereas a governing body of the Towns of Shoney recognizes that increasing the expenditures arise from time to time due to planned and unplanned expenses. And whereas a governing body for the Towns of Shoney passed ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero zero three on October twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, implementing a fee surcharge and creating a vehicle replacement fund. The current value of the vehicle replacement fund is seventy-three thousand nine fifty-nine held in the Wild Star account. Whereas the governing bodies of the Towns of Shoney recognize that expenditures increase increases commensurate with saving, savings transfers into the current budget year as a zero sum outcome in the yearly fiscal year budget. And whereas the Towns of Shoney solicited bids for a twenty twenty-five Durango, which was awarded in October twenty twenty-five for forty-six thousand eight twenty-three, and received an estimated quote for outfit from Comtech for twelve thousand, as well as graphics from top notch of two thousand. And now therefore be resolved by the governing body of the Towns of Shoney authorized the town treasurer to increase the F Y twenty twenty-five savings transfer of sixty thousand eight twenty-three of the following line items in the amount specified commensurate with savings transfers anticipated, ten thirty-eight, one thirty, savings transfer sixty thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. And now therefore be it further resolved by the governing body of the Towns of Shoney authorized the town treasurer to increase budget expenditures of the following line items in the amount specified commensurate with expected, expected savings transfer, ten forty-nine, nine eighty-four, vehicle replacement, sixty thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Said that, that we solicited bids for twenty twenty-five Durango was awarded in October, wasn't that October twenty twenty-four?
I've made some numerical twenty-four, twenty-five errors, I have those, thank you for pointing that out.
I'm not trying to be pedantic.
I made them.
It may be necessary.
Cause new years. I don't, I don't know why that's a thing, but apparently it is. But I noted, I will correct those uh, to, uh, yearly discrepancies. Be proper. Thank you. So in a nutshell, um, we're trailing a year. So throughout the year, we receive the fees and then that goes into the savings and the next year, we add it from the savings. It was previously accrued in, in fee surcharges from the previous year going to that fund, so we don't use the current year, what we're expected to receive, and that we use prior years to pay for it, but that makes sense.
Yeah, you're not.
We can spend it. Yeah, so that's why it's not, that, so that's why we don't put it into the budget until we actually do the purchase, and that's why, but we hold it outside of the budget in the Wild Star account, and then when we do make the purchase, then we have to modify the budget to add it to what it ac- actually is, instead of just putting in an eighty thousand dollar, that just gives me more authority to spend more money, which we try to spend exactly what we're gonna spend, and that's what we transfer.
The, the vehicle came in early also.
And it actually came in early too, so, uh, it's supposed to be here in, uh, end of February, March, and it came in January, so here we are, which is good, and we can get everything outfitted and, you know, before summer gets here, so it works out.
So in this, I noticed that there's two different plans as to what to do with that vehicle.
We can decide on that. It's not part of the resolution what we're exactly gonna do with it, but there's in that memo, it outlines what we can do with it, depending on what the council wishes to do with it in the end.
We approve resolution number twenty-four dash zero one zero.
It's, it's been, been moved by Councilman Stettler, second by Councilwoman Harkey that we approve resolution twenty-four dash zero one zero revenue and expenditure, any further discussion?
I just wanna also let you know that by doing it this way with a like-minded vehicle replacement, reusing stuff, we're saving the last vehicle to replace it by eighty-three thousand. So we're about twenty-three thousand dollars below the previous, so now that we're in this full recycle, it's actually reducing the costs as planned, and then we're, whatever we do with the other vehicle that will further reduce it, so.
Long as the gear doesn't get outdated.
Yeah.
Well, or in long as it's like-minded.
Exactly, yeah, we're directly forwarding everything over and keep with that cycle, so that's why we have the variety of vehicles and we replace with white vehicles, is the intention, is to reduce costs and not have to get all brand new stuff.
And we upgraded this Durango a little over the last, last two, right?
Yeah, V eight instead of V six.
Yeah, we have some issues with the V six, so this one's a V eight. But they were. Uh, we've replaced two engines, we've, we've had three engines replaced and the transmission replaced of new vehicles under warranty, that's the whole purpose of this is.
Of the Durango or the truck?
Both. So. And that's.
Which amplifies why it's important to buy a vehicle. Correct. Maybe if you could get out of the damn gas pedal.
So. There's, uh, the savings is being transferred to another line item.
It's giving the, uh, town treasurer to, cause we don't have that current line item, actually, it's zero right now. And so the resolution is to actually add that on expenses and revenue, so it, it doesn't have a an impact on the overall budget as far as the bottom line number, but it's increasing the expenditures that are allowed from the previously, um, approved F Y twenty-five budget.
Increasing the expenditures that are allowed, so it's already earmarked as far as, but I, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused on, you know, so we we're doing a transfer and, and so then there's another expenditure that goes along with that, I guess, to try to balance out the budget, is that correct?
So we're, we're going to, on one side, we're increasing the revenues. And then we have the increase of the expenditures and the offset, they're the same.
So that's, yeah.
And so it has a zero sum at the end, it doesn't, it doesn't put our budget in the negative.
Deposit and then a withdrawal.
Yes, in and out. Of the same amount of money.
Right, so there's no, it doesn't mess with the fiscal budget.
Bottom line.
It modifies it, but it doesn't modify the bottom line number of at the end of the year.
Plus or minus, yeah.
Cause it, yeah. Uh, did that answer, or were you asking?
Well, removing money, and I wanted, just wondered if it's being earmarked already, I mean, it's going into a line item, right?
Oh, yeah, and that's what the resolution, uh, the, the memo, it's earmarked specifically for this vehicle and the outfit of that vehicle, um, and nothing else.
Yeah, we can't go to Vegas on it.
Damn it, we. It'd be a fun trip.
I don't. I went to Vegas for Christmas and wasn't, it was a good time, but it wasn't no money coming back.
Drive there in an eighty thousand dollar pickup, ride back home on a hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand dollar Greyhound bus.
And Dan, further answer your question, you know, if, you know, those are bids, but that's what we're transferring is what we expect to spend, but if, if it comes back less and there's like, you know, four thousand dollars less than we expected to spend, we're not, it's for the vehicle, so it's not gonna go get spent somewhere else in some other appropriation, it's, it's very specific to just this. It's not like being able, it's not money that's gonna be reprogrammed into something else, since we didn't spend it.
Right, it goes back to the.
It's very specific to just the vehicle.
Goes back to the fund for.
As, yeah.
Next year's.
And we just.
Vehicle on the truck.
We'd, we'd end up putting that money back into the vehicle replacement fund, whatever we didn't spend at the end of the year, when we reconcile all the accounts.
To go for the, for the truck.
For the next two years down the road.
Does the vehicle replacement fund also do repairs, maintenance, those?
It can, it has, in the past, when we have the funding, the idea of the vehicle replacement fund is to ensure that we have the funds available from, uh, fees that are as assessed and received from citations and whatnot that go specifically for that, so there's actually, the, the ordinance actually specifies that those funds are earmarked, they can't be reprogrammed in any way. They are only for that purpose of replacing vehicles, so that's.
Can't go in the general fund.
Well, it's part of the broad aspect of general fund, but not in the, in the, in the actual usage of the general fund where, you know, we don't spend, and the mayor's like, hey, I want a new, uh, I want a new chair, so I'm gonna use that money, he can't do that, it's, it's earmarked, as you said, it's especially. So, yeah, it's, it's very confined, um, it's limited to use funds. Same thing like econo- econo- economic development tax money that we get in, we can't use that for personnel, we have to use it for economic development, so i- in that same line, by ordinance, it's set that way.
Different budgets that they're.
We have.
But it's still.
We have, we have.
Part of the overall, yeah.
It can all be used for waters or.
Thank you.
Now you saw that number and you're like, hey, we can use that as a slush fund.
Hey, it wasn't true, I, I can't imagine that would happen, but, uh.
You wanna make sure we're on the up and up?
No, I'm just going, I'm just trying to understand, uh, you know.
You bet, correct.
So, you know, and it's. Yeah. I mean, I, we work budgets at the college all the time, I mean, as a matter of fact, we're getting ready to submit our budget for, you know, that's for next year in about two or three weeks, and so putting the numbers together for that line items, we'd spend money on like crazy money all the time, you know, uh, line items, I mean, so I get the idea of, you know, what we do with budgets and the bigger ones, you know, institutions, I just was trying to figure it out more here.
Yeah, and I've, you know, the general budget that's passed F Y twenty-five, that, you know, that can be reprogrammed and stuff like that without increasing anything to, for line items. Um, but this vehicle replacement fund is very specific to just one thing, it can't be reused in any other way, so whatever's not used has to go back into that fund. And it's very specific.
It's like, well, the water money can't be used on the Wild Star for the water and water, money cannot be used on anything but the water by law. Same with the sewer, same with the way this was set up. That's all the money can be used for.
Which is why we have to add it to the budget as needed, as opposed to budgeting it at the beginning.
Cause rather, rather than budget it, it's already been.
And the, well, and the reason we keep it in a Wild Star fund is, uh, could we gain the interest out of it while sitting in there, so it increases our interest, uh, income.
So, Wild Star, sorry, what?
It's basically a savings account held by the state that has secure funding, and we receive a rate return, which is not, you know, like the stock market, but it's secure and it's, it's fairly consistent, and it's based on the basis points of the Federal Reserve and the bond market, so it, it's it gives us something back instead of sitting in a checking account, where it gets, you know, two dollars, we might get a thousand dollars, so big difference.
There, there's a whole bunch of different Wild Star accounts for our town.
Yeah.
That this money's in this for that, that money's enough for that, and it has to stay on those lines.
Which, one of these days, I'll, I'll sit down with you guys and we can go over all that, and so you have a clear picture of how this all interplays in the city municipality versus, you know, C W C, maybe a little different, something like that.
They are different.
Yeah.
I'm sure they are.
Hopefully, anything else, or?
Any, any further discussion? None being all in favor, say aye. Aye, both same. Motion passed, all in the affirmative. Uh, mayoral appointments. If, uh, I can read, I can read my appointments. Uh, off, why I apologize, not providing a copy of this to everybody.
You give it to me, I'll make a copy of it.
Sorry, I thought you had him on there like that. Yeah, yeah. My bad, too.
You need the list, Joe?
Yeah, I.
I have mine.
Uh, Chris, I just want to make a copy, you're probably better written. Well, I had my list. Chris is making a copy for everybody.
Oh, oh, oh. I gotcha.
Thank you, sir.
If I was not in this afternoon, I'd have had this whole nice, nice meeting, but. Now, I'll read it, read them off, Mayor, Mayor Fordham, I have Councilman Jake Stettler. Uh, I wanna add on, on, on pound this pository beside, uh, Central Bank of Trust, uh, Wyoming, Wild Star, uh, Vincent Financial, I would like those at Wyoming Community.
Uh, Mayor.
Pardon?
I, I would suggest striking Vincent Financial as we close that account, we know we're using them for four years.
Then we will strike Vincent Financial. Uh, and insert Wyoming Community First Bank, uh, Riverton Ranger, uh, uh, I point Mark Nordean to replace, uh, Mark Nordean on the zoning board with Joel Heisman, Jake Stettler, and John Meyer as a citizen of Shoney, uh, when, uh, stay the same, uh, their in maintenance department, Jordan Whitehead replaced Mike Dimick in that position. Uh, Mark Nordean replaced Bob Zant as Wyoming Community Gas Representative, uh, John, John Meyer on the economic development, economic development, and Joe Nordean on the economic development, joining Jennifer Channel, Chris Coogee and Tammy Harkey. If anybody has any, I'd like to have a motion to approve all of the mayoral appointments. And if you wanna bring, break one of them out or two of them, it's up to the council, their decisions. How you wanna handle this, we can do it all at one time, however, however the council would like to do this.
On this recreation board, it says, consists of one council member, mayor, or two citizens. And we have two, I guess that's two.
Yeah. On what?
This is or. And local cities.
I don't, is she?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, she lives on, uh, third and Pine, I think.
Oh, okay.
Something like. On the recreation board?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the, that's the same board, that's been in a.
Yeah, I didn't know who she was.
Oh, yeah, they've been there next to last four years.
You know, with Chris and Chris.
I know, yeah.
At three fourteen Pine.
Right.
They're next door neighbors.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
I know all this because.
She's been on for.
Branches class.
Oh.
I think four or five years now.
Okay.
Yeah. And Ken Kundle's been on for.
Right.
For a long time, and no one expressed any reason to leave, and I think they're doing a good job, both of them.
Oh, I think they're, I don't know if her, that's not, I do.
Will we approve the mayoral appointments as presented?
Also.
Been moved by Councilman Stettler, second by Councilwoman Harkey, discussion. Do you have a question mark on the rifle range committee next to one?
You're bigger.
Yeah, I. He's gonna continue to be on the board.
Then John Meyer, I just, I guess I'm not.
John, would you please step up and introduce yourself, please? John, John is the ex-mayor, former Duvois, and he is now a current resident of. John, John is the ex-mayor, former Duvois, and he is now a current resident of the town of Shoshone.
Okay, awesome. I just never, never.
I didn't know who you were either. Yeah. But John's recently moved to Shoshone. He wanted to contribute to the town.
Good, awesome.
And he and John is also on our A two A committee that's gonna go down to Casper to, uh, to work with, trying to help develop, uh, grants for the town of Shoshone.
Cool. Whose place did you buy or where did you move?
Oh, with my wife and I are actually living over in senior housing.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Then look at old Duzzy. But anyway, John, I'm, John, I've known John, but we both got elected together as, as mayors and we, helped each other out a lot, yeah. We had issues and we worked together to solve problems and, and, uh, John decided not to ru- run again. Uh, last election and, and him and I've got tired of all the snow and Duvois and decided to come to Shoshone. John has an uncle that lives in Shoshone also.
Yes.
Anything else I forgot, go ahead and add?
Uh, no, I'm glad to be here and, and, uh, glad to do my part to help out Shoshone wherever I can, so. If that's what you guys want me to do, I'd be glad to do it.
Your uncle live on Seventh Street?
I believe so, yeah.
See the resemblance.
A lot of people say that.
So. But John, yeah, John's, uh, said he would be a part of, part of the economic board. Also, we put out, we needed a couple people and, we didn't have our door get knocked down, getting people signing up, but then when John said he'd happily do that if the town needed even. So, he's, uh, like, we're moving forward well. Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, John. All in favor, say aye. Ayes, both the same. Motion passed, all in the affirmative.
Doesn't matter, but town depository. That's still with the legislator that won't let you use a credit union, right? That's.
By state law.
We tried that a while back.
We tried that, but it failed in the, uh, judiciary, I believe judiciary community.
I remember, I remember it went so far, but I didn't know where it, so just was kind of, reeducate myself for what happened.
But that's why we can't.
Absolutely.
Have an ACFCU.
Yeah, yeah. You know, Central Bank of Trust actually fought very hard against this.
Oh, did they?
Oh, yeah.
All of the bank, all the banks, but they were very vocal.
I'm sure any bank that, you know, they'd rather make money on your money. They don't wanna see it go anywhere else.
It was Senator Case from Lander killed her. They actually, people referred it to as the Shoshone bill, which was one of the slush behind.
Yeah, us and Wright really the biggest ones impacted by the whole thing, so.
Wright was?
Yes, they have no bank and a credit union near there also. But there was, it, there were some other towns looking at it could help, but yeah, we were, we were the big push, so. But in any event, you know, maybe again. Never know, try again. But in, in, in any event, but yeah, there was, uh, the, there, well, the big banks lobbyist, singled me out, cause, cause I spoke in favor of it, singled, singled me out. So I must have said some good things, cause he had a lot of bad things to say about me. About how I was.
Yeah.
That I stole the big banks down, down the, flushing down the toilet, and I did not say, I had nothing derogatory about him. I just stood up, was that we needed, it'd be nice if we just walked next door and make a deposit instead of having to drive it all the way to River. Right. That was, I just stated facts.
Absolutely.
Anyway, but yes. But you remember well, Jordan. It'd be nice to be all cash. Anyway. Town, town, town leases.
Okay, Joe, on that before you go over the listing, um, for this, I need to have direction. I ha- I need to get these leases out. And so if we were gonna change the hundred dollars per year, is it still gonna be per year? Are you gonna change the hundred dollars? Um, Marshall also put together a change that you had wanted.
Well, the, the leases for the, for the airport hangar, we need to, as you like. For the, the six months, we, we want at least six months, not a year. We have, we, we have airport hangars here and.
So we're changing it to six months?
I never buried on that. We, that's what my recommendation to the council, that we change that to six months on the airport hangars.
And how much?
Fifty percent. It's half a year, so fifty percent of what we've been charging.
So we're still, we're charging fifty bucks?
Yes.
I thought we were gonna, I thought you were gonna raise that.
We will address that in six months. I think these, these should be addressed, these leases makes a lot more sense to, uh, dress this, have them run from July to July or fiscal year instead of the calendar year. Makes a lot more sense for me to do it that way.
Is there? And, you know, I mean, they're, just to interject here, just looking at it, I mean, we're not talking big money here or nothing, so I don't, I don't see why fix something that ain't broken, I suppose. But I'm looking at this and I'm guessing if you can afford an airplane, uh, you could probably afford to pay a little bit more personally.
Well, I, I think that's something we need to talk about in our, in this year's budget. When we come up to look at our fiscal, you know, we're gonna be start doing our budget in, what, April? I'm guessing we'll start working on our budget. I think we need to look at those fees and if those are, are still reasonable, we, you know, we have, uh, but four hangers out there and, and, sure, they're in pretty, pretty poor condition. Some probably possibly need, they either need to be repaired or removed. I mean, they're, they're not, uh, so we, we really need to dress our, our.
Are we able to talk about this right now for the leases? It's like the arena, ten dollars per year. I mean, we, people are paying more for a business license, but,
I think it's probably better to get a motion to second and go on discussion and make the changes there.
All right. Can I make a motion to go into discussion?
No, you gotta, you gotta make, okay, we need a motion and a second, and then you go into discussion.
I'll make a motion.
Been motioned to approve.
The leases?
To approve the leases?
Second.
Been moved in a, moved by councilwoman Hardkey, second by councilman Stettler, the, the approved the leases, we go into discussion.
Okay. So, I think the reason for the lease agreement for the, uh, Shoshone activities.
Correct.
For the fairgrounds, is that since they're leasing it, they have to assume the liability. And it's, I don't think the town really needs to make any money off of that really, be, if anybody does any activities there, it's just good for the town, but that's my personal opinion.
And that, and that, that's the reason, nah.
It's a nominal fee, but they're in a contract.
I don't disagree. I'm just saying that, you know, a business license or, um, anything is less than that, so.
Well, I would.
They maintain it, don't they?
Pardon?
They maintain it.
Yes.
Yeah, well, they're supposed to.
And they're, you know, uh, the I E, uh, do they still pay a watermelon or did we?
We modified that.
waiver that?
Yeah, the council waived that in exchange for them providing the, um, the maintenance and the general upkeep of the facility.
It's similar to the rifle range that's owned. And we, and they operate and run that, uh.
But I believe that we did that because it's town-owned property.
It's town-owned property.
So it's not a separate person owning it that we're giving free water to. It's the town owns it.
Right. And the same with the, the, the shooting, our shooting range, it's town-owned property and the rifle club is managing that. Or the town, we're no char, they're not charging us.
I thought it was B L M leased.
Well, it is a B L M lease, but the town owns the, owns the lease, so, but we have applied to Congress your ownership.
Right.
Yeah, but yeah, it is B L M owned lease, but the town has the lease.
So what do we re-lease that for?
The, the rifle range? Nothing. We, we, there, they, they manage that for us and don't charge us a fee to manage it before they managed their rivers. Uh, wasn't managed well. That's what end, ended up to where we are with it now.
Yeah, I'm good. You, you guys answered what I needed to be answered on the Reno. We can carry on.
So that's sort of the.
My concern with the airport hangar deal is, uh, you sent us that email on January first. That some of them are, are that only one. I haven't made it up there yet. It's in pretty bad disrepair.
We had pictures of all four hangers.
There's four?
Yeah. One of them's in real good condition, the three are not.
Right, so.
Really bad.
What can, what are our options? Uh, also, I heard some feedback from non-hanger renters or whatever that they did land in Shoshone and they had to wash the mud off their plane.
Well, don't land on a dirt strip then.
Well, I'm, has that, has there been any maintenance on the landing strip? I mean, we're taking in.
Yes. Well, yes.
Well, at some point there has been. I meant recently, like in the last few years.
Yes.
A little more road base or anything.
No, we haven't put any road base on. We, we keep the weeds off. We graded when, we may not have graded it in two years. But it, but it also, it was inspected this last year. Uh, we get inspected. I went out there with the inspector, said it's in great shape.
Okay, I, I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, no, it's in, it's in, it's in, it's in great shape and, uh, and it, for, for actually a dirt runway, they said we're, our runway is in good condition.
Well, apparently it's got ruts in it now.
Well.
I'm teasing.
Okay, I was gonna say, I didn't see any. I, I personally drive it every year myself and check the condition.
Now I know it has ruts, I'm just kidding.
Not when it's muddy, not when it's muddy. But anyway, but no, yeah. And we keep the weeds down. We do want, uh, yeah, it, our, actually our airport is gaining some interest. We actually.
Right, and then we have this.
What?
The falling down hangar.
Right, correct. And so this.
Their hangars are those ours?
No, they're theirs. We don't know, we don't, they, we rent them the land, they build the hangar.
So essentially, it's our hangar then?
No, no, it's their hangar. They own the hangar.
They can't pick it up and take it.
Yeah, they can, they can take it apart, dismantle it and take it.
Well, I mean, I could take my shop with me too, but.
Right.
But theoretically, the land is what we're doing, what they do with the land is on them.
So the, the payment is really for?
The land. Exactly.
Okay.
Um, so we don't own it, it's not our job to upkeep it, it's their job to upkeep it, but.
And we'll, then you show. Oh, I, I'm smart.
The condition.
I'm not sure who exactly they are. There's three of them. One looks pretty good.
I'm sure this doesn't look like any.
But there's three, not four? No. Right. So we, we need to, they need to improve that. And then, and at that time, you know, we can also look at, are we gonna adjust the fee to have the hangars there or not?
Do the fees we charge cover the maintenance of the runway?
No.
I mean, cause that's what they've been using it.
I mean, the maintenance runway would be whatever material we use, gas, wear and tear on vehicles and personnel costs to do it.
One of our, one of our problem is windsocks and stuff we gotta keep, but another one of our problems are, they haven't got on us. We need to fence it. Our fence is bad shape.
Well, everybody knows you gotta buzz the airport, wants to get the antelope off the runway and then you can come back and land.
In fact, sure, they had the bowl got loosened in on there too. That's happened too.
But I will say budgeted, we have five hundred dollars a year that we budget for the airport. And we haven't used hardly any of that every year, so.
You know, of course, when our guys are out there and working.
Yeah, that's covered under payroll and everything else, so it doesn't reflect the actual cost of doing it. So it's kind of one of those things, we'd have to really get back with you and actually see how much, what was used, how long to, yada, 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 give you what it actually costs us to facilitate it. Um, budget wise, it's only five hundred dollars that we budget, but that would be for windsocks, uh.
Right.
Any gravel, which wouldn't be much, you know, but.
But what we have coming up is bent. That's, it's just fallen down in place. There's no fence there. And they've let us get by, they, the Y dot, Y dot overseas.
I think, I mean, I think in my only opinion, I think it needs to be self-sustaining and then obviously, building falling down is a concern.
I, I, it's just really been meaning to address this for past couple of years. It's just, we've had other things that we've been dealing with, but it's, I just, we need to move this forward. That's why I brought it up.
Yeah, I, I, if there's a building falling down, we need to address it. If we're grading it, putting gravel on it, it needs a fence. Fence is gonna be crazy. Um, you know, obviously, the town's gonna be on the hook for some of that, so I think it's definitely warranted to, you know, maybe increase some.
We, we might be able to seek some grant to help with this, but we will look in that too.
But it seems like, you know.
Some, some help from the state.
Seems like the grant funding's kind of.
It, it's gonna be a lot harder now.
So I, I guess my point is, where do we wanna put our best foot forward? Do we really wanna put money into matching a grant for fence when there's probably some bigger fish to fry?
Do we wanna close the airport? That's nothing. Yeah, I don't think you wanna do that. What I'm saying, we may be forced to put fence.
And I understand, and that's why I think if that's the case, maybe we get a jump on this and, and we'll get increasing.
That's why, that's why I brought this up.
Now, prior to fiscal years.
Yes, right. I wonder if it'd be prudent to table this and reach out to the leases and.
I, I think we offer them a six-month lease. That gives them six months to, to force to work on this with them. They have no lease now at all, but I think we should give them the six-month lease. And that gives them six months to try to figure out what they're gonna do with their hangars. And in a six months, you know, we'll, we can, gives us time to be working on our things and make a decision on what we're gonna do. That's why a six-month lease.
So.
I, I, uh, just off the top of my head, I mean, I, I think you need to have these leases, whether it's six months or a year, but you don't wanna have it hanging out where there, there is no lease.
Correct. I was gonna bring that up, that the, these are expiring leases, so, yes, we need to do, whatever we're gonna do, we need to do it.
Yeah, and if you're thinking about changing it, you're better off doing a short term, like a six-month for now, and then work on it and decide what those changes are gonna be, so they, and then when the time's up, you can say, hey, here's the new lease. And go forward from there.
So you don't think any changes now would be beneficial?
Well, if you wanna talk about the, the money or whatever, I mean, we're gonna have a.
I'm not against getting lease out. I'm just saying, I think maybe a little bit of an increase.
But if we do a six-month lease, we've got time to sit down and figure out costing our fence and.
And I'm good with that. I just think we should do a little bit of an increase now with that lease. And then I think that'll also probably solve a few issues with the gentleman, whoever is. Whoever has got this hangar that's in decrepit shape, if he's not going to. Maybe willing to pay the increase, well, we probably have our answer on whether he's gonna take care of his hangar.
I'm just thinking, we gave them no warning, we're gonna give it an increase in this six months. You know, we'd we'd started, you know, in October, November, or even December, we're gonna raise our lease, give them some sort of warning. I feel. He's more comfortable about, that's the only thing I'm saying, and then. That's why I didn't, that's why I did not suggest we increase it, I think we need to increase, but I think we can. We can work that out in six months, but that'll be. Cause I don't have a a number.
I think it needs to be studied and planned, this is really what I think Danny is saying.
Yes.
I absolutely agree with that as opposed, well, that way we have logic and we have a reason to be able to raise the. The fees and all.
And to what it level it needs to be raised.
Right.
Yeah. Without the study, we don't really know.
Correct, that's what I'm getting at.
And and based on the type of improvements we're gonna be doing and how that gets amateurized over the years, you know, that sort of thing.
Well, yeah, I guess.
This really is dirt cheap, I mean.
You know, what is another hundred bucks, seriously? If you can afford an airplane, I think you can spare another hundred bucks, what's that, without five gallons of fuel? Like. So then it's six months, then we can really increase a minimal increase now, is I guess my recommendation would be a minimal increase now. And then in six months, we review it in greater depth and really have a concrete increase then. Or maybe there's not one of that, I don't know, but.
But the increase to do what?
We obviously know the fence is coming.
We do, but we don't know what the cost of that's gonna be yet.
Well, I know what the cost of fence might learn.
Yeah, it's a bitch, I know it's gonna be.
That ain't gonna cover the fence my place.
No, and I don't know that we, well, we'll have to see what what makes sense for. That after fuck studying the lease.
And then I guess my next thing is the hangar that's falling down, the. If he decides I'm out, cause it doesn't look like there's a plane in there. I'm out and just leaves that, that's our responsibility to clean that up, right?
So believe in that concurrent contract. We're protected on that, if we tear it down, I believe we they gotta pay us. Cause they're 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 they're. It may not be spelled, they're required to keep the maintenance up on the. On the hangar.
I guess I just am looking at it as if not, you know, and you know, we got. Money into, sure, tear it down and haul off the junk, the rubble, so.
Yeah, and and that I guess that's a possible, and that's a possibility.
I guess I just. I look at it like, what's a minimal increase? To give us six months to really review what we plan on doing. My recommendation, and I'm just one guy. I mean, my water bills. About that per month.
I don't wanna talk about my water.
So it's like, you know, I mean.
I already had um, one of the. Owners of that, one of the hangers called and left a message wanting. To know when she's gonna get her lease to sign, so that's why I'm saying I need.
And I.
Yeah.
I personally have ridden in one of the individuals airplanes that is housed there. And been in that hangar, and I'm guessing that is the hangar that is probably in top notch shape.
I don't think there's. Any other ones. I think they're empty or just have like storage.
Yeah.
There's no planes.
Well, even even if it's just storage. And a hundred bucks. People that. Rent it for the year but only use it for six months of the year. And use other hangers around the county. Well, it's a dirt runway, so then they're like need one in Riverton during the uh. You know, that does go on with our airport.
Absolutely.
At least in one case.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah. I just, I guess you were in the bathroom, but I guess my recommendation would be a minimal increase. For six months, gives us time for six months to look at it. And I guess my concern is the anger that's falling down, us having to. Be the burden of taking care of that. Whether it's an hour and six months. So that's my recommendation. I mean, I'm not saying like increase this like like. An astr- astronomical amount, but I think something would be beneficial. To get a jump on whatever cost we're gonna endure.
Well. The motion second for discussion was to approve it as presented. So whatever changes we're gonna make, we need to have those. Movements made so we can get this figured out.
So were we as presented, is that one year?
That's what.
Because, okay, I thought we already discussed that.
But the motion was as presented.
Okay.
Would have to be amended. But I don't know, I guess I don't know quite how this works, can you make a motion on top of? To amend the motion to state.
Whatever you want.
Well, I moved to amend the motion. To making this a six month lease. And doubling the monthly lease cost.
For the airports.
For the airport hangers, and so. In this instance, it would be a hundred bucks for six months rather than. A hundred bucks per year.
Second amendment. Been moved by Councilman Whitener that we. That's the motion be amended for the airport, that it be. The annual, the annual fee will be two hundred, will be two hundred dollars a year for six months, that would make it a hundred dollars for six months. That would be for the, be for David Matt Dawg, Janet Washington and Al Kenyon. Was would all be hu- one hundred dollars and their lead, their term of the lease would be for six months and not for, not for one year. Been moved and seconded, aim for the discussion on.
Amen.
On that amendment to the motion.
I will mention that some of the other leases also like last year, like to. West uh, west of town, north of the highway that Lee Gray's and Lee's also doubled. You know, a lot of, some of the other leases have been doing the same, so it's it's not out of line with what we've been doing with other. Leases.
Correct. My only concern is that I don't know if that. Then I guess we address this in six months, but that. We may be raising it more than that. When we look at our fence costs and everything else, I mean, we may.
Yeah, I just, my thing was a minimal increase now, cause I think that it's dirt cheap, and then in six months, I think we need to certainly. Review that, review that, you know.
Yeah, I still like the idea of looking at it for six months before we actually make any changes in the amount, I mean, I'm still there, so. I appreciate what you're saying.
So been moved and seconded, seconded. Uh, all in favor of the amendment to the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All's the same.
Aye.
Aye. Did I, I didn't hear Tammy vote.
I was on the first one.
Okay, as straight as two, in favor of the amendment. Amendment. Now can I was motion to approve the amendment, the motion as amended?
We need another motion?
Yeah, the last one, as amended. Yeah. We need another motion as.
As amended, as amended.
That's what it is.
We approve the motion as amended.
But move by.
Also.
Move by Councilman Steller, second by Councilman Hart, you approve the motion as amended, all in favor, say aye. Or any further discussion. No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both the same. Motion passed, uh. Councilman Nordean voted nay.
Signature card.
Yeah, I'm getting there, uh, Central Bank and Trust signature card.
We need a motion to remove Bob Zent. And add Mark Nordean to the Central Bank and Trust.
No, we do not.
Say, I'm sorry?
Yeah, no, we don't.
We do.
Yeah, we do.
We do it without a motion in the second.
Right.
I remember that we removed Bob Zant and. Uh, put on Mark Nordean under the Central Bank and Trust signature card.
I'll second it.
Been moved by. Councilmen Statler, second by Councilman Hart, you that we remove. Uh, Bob Zant from our signature Central Bank and Trust signature card and add Councilman. Mark Nordean to that card, any discussion? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all is the same, motion passed. Only affirmative. Police report, please.
Good being your tablets if you haven't done it already, um. I categorized it so the, I guess the color is peach on the top is crime against person. Or gold or yellows, crime against property, uh, the green is generally crimes, then the blue is. Um, calls for service in the municipality, there is, not necessarily criminal activity, but just. That's how it's kind of separated and. As you go down, uh, the first call was twenty twenty four, so that's. Was all last year, and then there's comparison for the year prior, which is twenty twenty three, then. There's the change, and some of these changes are really skewed, and if you have one call, next year you have two, it's a hundred percent increase, so you have to put that perspective a little bit. Uh, but it does show some trends, uh, then there's the five year average, which is um, also compared against. The five year change is looking at just twenty twenty four as compared to what the average would be. So we did have some increases, um, of concern, especially like things like domestic. Um, but there's lots of other national trends that influence some of those things that occur. Uh, we've also had a lot of new people that have moved into town that have, um. Added to some of these things, um. Nothing more concerning, um, a lot of, and some of the stuff like disorderly conduct also has to do with. So we now have a much larger, um, travel plasma. So we have a lot more people stopping and congregating there and then issues that arise from that from time to time. Um, also added to that as well, not just not necessarily around town, and it's not putting a blame on the business, it's just. You have more people that are meeting up and you have more potential for things to sometimes get out of hand, um, so we did have a large increase. In that as well. Crimes against property. Were pretty consistent year to year. But things like theft. Fraud. Have continued to increase, specifically shoplifting. And then as you come down, you look at the the general crimes, these are more self initiated. So while these increases are not necessarily calls for services, it's things that the police officers are actually identifying. And taking action from their own observations and being present in the community. Um, things like warrants, arrests have a huge increase, but that comes with being more involved with people and those people and also doing traffic stops and. And contacts with citizens. Our controlled substances has been flat in the year, but it's still a large increase from what we've historically had over the five year period. DUIs pretty much were in line with yearly averages. The one thing we've gotten a lot more is, as you can see on here, that really stands out to me is intoxicated pedestrians. That is probably the the single highlight that we've had, um, as massive increase. From years prior, not just five year average, but or not just last year, but five year average, it's. And again, some of that comes with. The ability of people to first alcohol. Package liquor and then not leave a facility and then drink outside of that facility. And then we get called for various reasons because of. Their actions while they're there, so that you can kind of all say it's disorderly conduct, but the separation is, disorderly conduct is one thing, it's someone just being mad, angry. Et cetera versus intoxicated, which is two separate aspects, maybe they can both be happy at the same time, but they are tracked as two different distinct things. We've had a lot of activity, activity with our K nine, um, which aids in, uh, not just the controlled substances and drug use. Um, around town, but also. The, um. County as a whole, so we have the only active K nine currently in the county. And so we facilitate, uh, K nine searches in all the schools at upon request. As for example, DuBois, Lander, Shoshone, so we are. Being requested to assist the county at large. Because of the nature of that, we have the only active duty K nine in all county. Actually, I take that back, I believe Highway Patrol now has a trooper that has a K nine, so. But for the longest time, we're the only active ones, um.
Do they, if you go to say DuBois, do they school, do they pay for that?
We don't currently send an invoice or a charge, I suppose that's something that we could look into doing, but I think that would maybe have a chilling effect on. The needs of the greater community and trying to get that, being that we are when the only facilitator of it. But we could definitely look at, it's not like a monthly thing, it's maybe once or twice a year, just having that presence there that it can be done. Deters some of that activity, uh, but yeah, that's that's something currently charged for or invoice for, but.
Well, it makes sense that we would have, you know, cooperation between the different organizations, you know, law enforcement organization. It's it's a lot of county, you know, so it makes a lot of sense to work together.
And that's exactly in line with what I've been trying, as well as the sheriff and the other chiefs of police. Is having more of a, not just this is my town, I don't care about your town, I don't care about your town, but we all live in Fremont County, a lot of us. Have either lived somewhere or drive somewhere, all these different things, and we're all intertwined. And what affects Riverton affects Shoney and vice versa at various points in time, so. We have very limited resources in law enforcement for the size of our communities and the size of this county that has to be covered. And so we've had a very concerted effort to provide a unified front. Regardless of what agency you call home and working together for the betterment of the county at large as well as the individual municipalities.
Do you feel it's a fair sharing amount? I mean, is it equitable?
I. So there's two ways to look at that, I would say it's equitable. So there's two ways to look at that, I would say it's equitable as far as agency to agency. I would say pound for pound, if there's a huge disparity. Um, I think Shoshone pound for pound does a lot more than anybody else does. Uh, because of our size and what we contribute at multiple levels. So if you look at it from that vantage point, we definitely give a lot more than we receive. But at the same time, the overall effort from all communities, um, county, Lander, Riverton, um, I know DuBois is still up and coming on getting their police department really integrated. But uh, yeah, I would say that it's an equitable sharing overall.
So you're happy with it, you're okay with it?
Yeah, I, 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 I think that it's a much needed thing in Wyoming. Um, Fremont County um, was the first with our, our multi-jurisdictional team and our MOU, um, that serves as a model for the state. Um, I know there's, I believe, three other counties that have adopted our model for their county and their municipalities within that county to be able to share the resources freely um, and be able to give assistance to their individual municipalities. Which I know is kind of the broad scope of things, but it's it's been having an impact um, on lowering the incidence of crashes, DUIs. And deaths on our highways as well as safety in our communities. Um, I can say that when we go over to say Riverton, there's a precipitous drop in calls for service, assaults, all these other little things that happen, they drop exponentially with our assistance being given, same thing as you shown. So we do events here in Shoshone. And it's all about highway safety, we all drive the highways. And last thing you want is the fear of somebody intoxicated driving on a highway with your family on the road. And then you get the call when something happens. And then you're like, you know, where's the police officers? Cause we're so sparsely jurisdictional, but by integrating this in this way, it provides much more visibility and much more ability to respond and address things before they turn into something worse. And that's the whole idea behind it. But yes, pound for pound, we, we definitely punch above our body weight. But we are a smaller agency, so that's, you know, expected. But when we need help and stuff like that, um, I, I would hope that uh, if we were ever in the dire straits, let's say Riverton was at it from time to time personnel wise, I would hope that they would assist us, cause if not, I would then have to question that relationship. Thankfully, we haven't necessarily been in that position to that extent yet. But if we ever were, I would hope that they would reciprocate.
Are the reservation law enforcement agencies, are they involved in this?
So they, they wanna be, but because of the restrictions of federal law and federal jurisdiction and it, they're unable to do it within our municipalities, the way that we are able, but we can't go on the reservation either, pretty much. So it's, there, there's some roadblocks there.
Huge footprint, you know.
They are, and but because they are technically a sovereign nation, um, it, it, it local authorities unless we are deputized or carry a certification card from the federal government to be acting that capacity. And that also puts us in a lot of liability too, that actions we take there and, and just things like that. So there is a separation there, but it's not, uh, it's, it's more of a legislative and a law thing than a will or want to be a part of it. I guess would be the best way to say it.
Okay. Thanks.
But the biggest takeaway is I would overall say that if you look at the trends, a lot of the things that Shoshone is the safest it's been in five years as far as things that are being done in town, there's things that still happen, of course there are. But the thefts, uh, vandalism, a lot of the little nuanced things that have an impact on the community are continuing to decrease. And a lot of the increases I said at the onset are because of proactive policing and not it, uh, not being responsive, but instead of being responsive, we're going out, seaching out and identifying these things and taking care of them before they manifest into something else that would result in a call for service. So proactive policing versus reactive is what we try to do. We've worked with a lot of the community members and they give us a lot of information, a lot of support. And they've been very vital to us knowing where, you know, it's a small town. You know, if I'm on that side of the, the street, there's only one cop, I usually move over there, something happens over there. I'm not around to see it everywhere, cause it's, but having community involvement has been vital to our ability to respond and, and take care of these things as they um, come up and to lower these incidents that were plaguing Shoshone for years, you know, with thefts, vandalism. Which have a detrimental effect on living here. And those re- being redu- reduced, I think shows a, a, a large commitment the town, the police department and the officers to facilitate ensuring that that continues to decrease as much as possible. Our call volume though has, and like I said, a lot of this is self-initiated, but our call volume has um, been the highest it's ever been. And this is just for one year, but we had sixteen hundred and sixteen or six hundred and sixteen calls for service, which is a fifty-four percent increase from last year and a forty-seven percent increase year over five year average. So we're doing more. And we continue to do that. Uh, staffing levels, we did have the loss of one officer um, on January first. However, we did have a applicant pool from the SRO for an officer, so we were able to go to the next candidate. That had already had his background, had already done his clearance and uh, have an offer for that position to be filled, so that's expected to be replaced February first. So only because we had that existing application pool within that year period, were we able to move on to the next? Otherwise, it would be a longer process, so we kind of lucked out in that regard. We, we do have uh, an officer that is considering uh, other uh, agency employment, he's not, not saying that, that he's leaving, but he's considering it, looking at it due to pay. Not that we pay horrible, but there's, as you know statewide, there's been a large response to years of kind of underpaying and trying to make that a gap. And so some agencies have had the ability to jump ahead by a lot. Not all agencies are equal and um, so it, you know, that's unfortunate, but it, it, it's the reality of the world we live in. Now, but that's not a decision he's making, it's, it, it's a personal decision, not one out of wanting to be gone, but one out of financial need. And taking a look at it, and I would say that's fair for anybody in life to not turn down possibility to better your life and at least take an honest to God look at that. So no decision has been made, so we're still currently uh, we're down one right now, but that will be filled February first. So we have um, a total of currently employed, we have three full-time patrol officers. And so their main duties are patrolling, that includes me and two others. Uh, we have two part-time officers that fill in the gaps, one works part-time as, on a continual basis. But he's not benefited. So he's thirty hours a week, so he's not, he could be benefited, but he's not. So he's considered part-time, but he's, every week he works. Then we have another part-time that fills in kind of here and there to kind of fill gaps as needed. Um, and then we have a full-time SRO that is funded by the school. And we have a full-time task officer that's funded by the federal government. But he's still our officer. So uh, staffing wise, we have essentially five full-time, two part-time. Um, but out of those five full-time, one's at the school, one's a task force officer, both of those are fully funded or funded by other outside entities on a reimbursement basis, um, and as far as the town goes, we have three. So that's kind of where, where we stand right now.
I mean, Riverton raised their officer's wages significantly last year, didn't they?
I don't know the full how that all worked, I know it was kind of a little bit near controversy on how they went about raising it, who got what. But yes, they did address their existing officers raises. I'd say we're competitive, but you know, you know, competitive is, is a very nuanced thing, cause some people, you know, we can say we're competitive, cause we're within ten percent of somebody else, but ten percent could mean the difference between who, where somebody wants to work and what they're looking for. So there, there's those challenges that we're facing, but um, staffing wise, we, we don't have a staffing problem here, we're not severely understaffed, we haven't been four years, so that's a good thing, and having continuity of staff is important, especially in Shoshone, where you need to be able to know the people and you even know their needs and where they're coming from when you're dealing with them and be able to have those things. And if you don't have the continuity, you're always having fresh faces cycle in, you're never really getting that to know the residents of Shoshone. So that is something that we, I strive for is, is to have longevity and not just be a breeding ground to go somewhere else. You know, I want the officers to be here for years and get to know the community and be a part of the community and interact with the community for the betterment. So that's kind of where we're at, Riverton's uh, getting staffed up and, and they're, I think, getting their staffing levels where they need to be, so they can start being more proactive instead of reactive. But overall, the health of the departments in a very good place, our commitments and our hiring cooperation with all the other agencies within Fremont County is excellent. We have uh, quarterly meetings with the chiefs and the sheriff and, and we go over, you know, problem areas, things that we can look on and work as a team, kind of like have CAG in a way. Um, gets together and, and addresses these issues in, in a, at a top level position to try and make those changes. So that continues to be act, we continue to be actively involved in that process and, you know, have our voice and how we're gonna help and I, I think that uh, we've done a lot for the community, so it's definitely been a positive thing for Fremont County as a whole.
Warrant arrest, is that just how it goes or is that in part due to some of the technology that you have?
So, yes, uh, some of that goes to that we can do our searches and so when you know people, we check the warrant lists that come out, so you know, hot lists, so to speak. And, and that's part of knowing the community, knowing who's in your community. And then you're able to go out and know and be, and take care of that if they have a warrant. Uh, some of that comes off of traffic stops and uh, there's a lot of warrants that get issued, a lot more higher incidents of that, especially since twenty, you know, COVID and stuff. Where, where kind of, there was a moratorium on warrant service because of the jails and the COVID and not taking, you know, minor stuff like that. And so there's a backlog that continues to, you know, be addressed as they come into contact with law enforcement for various reasons. Um, so uh, that probably will stay fairly high from time to time, but it hopefully it comes down, but yeah, that was a huge spike.
Significant increase.
It, it, it was, I, that's the first time we've had one that high as for one year, but it was definitely a huge spike for that. But that just comes with those, all those factors combined, add to that, why that was that way.
How many of those are arrested in the same person?
I couldn't give you that exact number, but I'm sure there's a couple of them. Um, and then the other one, the assist other agency, you know, that was a really large increase. Uh, but those are tracking, when we're working in Riverton, we're technically assisting another agency. They create their own cases and track their own reporting for what happens in their community. And so we consider it an assist of an agency, even if we're dealing with it, we're taking the report, but it goes under their, their reporting, their statistics. Um, we are NIBR's compliant, which um, I there's a list that came out and the only community in Fremont County a year ago that was NIBR's compliant was Riverton Police Department. Um, I quickly corrected that and Sergeant Leaf Green is our NIBR's contact, sent the training. And so we are now, we have been hundred percent NIBR's compliant since that memo came out, so we.
NIBR's, is that what you're using?
It's a national incident based reporting system. So all the stats I'm giving you right here, the federal government tracks those as well, like in, there's part one, part two crimes. And things of that nature and it shows crime rates in individual communities, county, state, et cetera. And it's one of those things mandated for federal funding. So we are complaining with that, so we're ahead of the curve there. There's a lot of communities within Wyoming that are and we're not one of them. Um, our technology that we do have, uh, you know, these citations, we were the first, we were, they were landed a second. Uh, we, we have MDTs and we continue as we upgrade through a grant, our MDTs. Uh, we are selling our old equipment to lander to help them kind of get the footprint to get started with MDTs. I know it sounds funny, but uh, and I believe that Riverton is working on following our model and getting, I, I worked with their lieutenant on getting any information and they're trying to go to MDTs. That, that increases officer safety, it increases the accuracy of the information we're given. That gives us a lot more real-time information, what's going on and is a double check of things, good people are people and they make mistakes. And we've had numerous times where we've ran somebody through dispatch and no fault of theirs, they say everything's fine. Well, then we verified our, our MDTs and we find out, oh, they're not fine, they have a felony warrant out of here. And that happens from time to time, so it serves as again, officer safety and you know what you're dealing with. And you can see it for yourself, you're not relying on a mistake of the data, whatever being entered wrong and not reflecting on that. So all those things combined have, have made it just more efficient, more effective and safer for the officers. And so uh, I think that we have done a extremely good job of promoting that and we bring that to everywhere we go in the county.
And we have a modern police force in Shoshone. Chris was available to talk.
Two thousand three hundred and seventy-two citations with an average speed of forty-eight miles an hour.
Yeah, and just to clarify for the miss, I guess since you brought that up, uh, I can't remember what the, the comment was about our speed that we're, well, no, it was a comment about that we're, we're not even stopping people that are doing forty-eight miles an hour. That's not what this is saying, that's saying that the average of all the stops for the course of the year, if you average them out, some are forty-two, some are thirty-nine or forty, forty-one, forty-two, whatever it is. The average stop is forty-eight miles an hour in a thirty. Now the officers have discretion, so they can choose to give a warning, they can choose to cite them for what they were doing and they can also choose to give them a reduced discount on their citation. Uh, with some exceptions, there, they have that discretion, there are some exceptions where they can't. Um, but in this case, the average actual citation that's provided is forty-one, so um, officers typically aren't hitting everybody with exactly what they're doing, they're, they're taking into account other factors and giving them a, I guess you'd call it a break and being reasonable and not trying to just stick it to the, to the offender. Uh, so if we have forty-eight, eighteen overs, the average speed. Now that's a decrease from the year prior. I'll, I'll point that out too. But the biggest thing I want to note on here is if you look at criminal citations, so these are citations for obviously criminal statutes, not just speeding. So this would be like possession of controlled substance, theft, uh, assault, all those types of things. Those decreased by thirty-eight percent year over year. And the biggest one is the felony investigations, that had a massive decrease of seventy percent year over year. Uh, I will say we had eighty percent clearance rate, we do have one outstanding case that has not been cleared, that is still open, which is still pretty good considering uh, of those five, two were property crimes, which are notoriously the hardest to clear. And that's the one that is pending, is a pending property crime that has not been cleared um, as a felony. And then other property crimes, which goes into vandalism, uh, destruction of property, things of that nature, also decreased by forty percent. And that goes into what I was saying before, is that as far as the safety of the community, this is The safety of the community, this is the safest it's been since I've been able to track over the five-year period. And I think that's a, uh, testament to the. Interactivity, the. The, uh. Would say fortitude, but just the diligence of the police officers on looking at just these and not just speeding citations. So I think it bears out that. It's not just about doing traffic, it's also about doing community leasing and community involvement to detour, decrease. Incidence of things that are harmful to the citizens of the community outside of just speed. That's pretty much all I have.
And community policing in in the nutshell. Any any questions from the chief? Thanks for this presentation. Councilman White, nerd, do you have anything you would like to? Talk about? Bring to the state public's attention. I need the on- anything ongoing or?
I I don't have anything at this time.
Councilman Norde, do you have anything? Councilman Stettler.
Just there saying it's gonna be, I think they lowered it to, or raised it to seventeen below, so trickle a little water.
For reminder. Weekend.
Yeah, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
Right.
And we don't. Charge for usage during the winters.
Overage.
Right, right, overage, I meant, yes. Let's trickle a little bit of water and keep safe.
Councilman Parky, would you like to add anything?
No.
We lost our clerk.
That was her bedtime, she's probably sleeping.
Yeah, I know, sleeping on the job, it's, uh. Touch a little bit economic development, just touch a little bit the medical. The both medical facility and Shoshone is still moving, still moving forward, we don't. By, if I have a firm, have a. Gets much further, I'll, if we get everything worked out, I'll be bringing it to the council. But they're still going forward, looking at possibilities, looking together a plan and. Yeah, I think it's gonna be a. I think a strong possibility is gonna be reality, and we do have some. You know, I talked about the A two A, uh, looking at grant possibilities, got a committee going to that and Y gap, you know, we're still. Pursuing grants, we've, uh, we're looking at, um. I've I've talked at both Rocky Mountain. And power and and Black Hills for natural gas into the subdivision, so we start looking, looking at that, and we do have a. A PER on the, on the water line, water system.
Should be done here the next month, I think.
They told me, yeah, and maybe even less, they said about seventy-five percent complete, I talked with, uh, Kyle about it this morning. So that's, so things are, you know, moving forward, we're still getting inquiries on on land. And people are looking at possibilities here, uh, of housing and. Maybe another business too, we had those inquiries about the airport, I think I mentioned that we had got from California and asked if it was for sale. But, uh, but anyway, there's things are moving, moving along fine, I believe, and. Looking forward to WHAM conventions next week. So. Mark's gonna, gonna go down, I'm gonna be there, uh. Uh, Chris is gonna go down. You know, hopefully. Hopefully our grant coordinator, hopefully he can make make it down.
Well, I have the Wind River Resorts Council, uh, thing I'm trying to figure out. Get some of that arranged and yeah, get that taken care of, because that's happens to be co-mosided with the same. It's right, so I gotta figure that out a little bit.
I gave Helen a heads up that you were working on that. Uh, I talked to her, but, um. All in all, thank you, good, uh, did you want anything, add anything, Kim?
Nope, I think I got all my parts done.
Any words Wes and Marshall, would you want to dance on to us?
No, I've already spoken to.
Okay, well, I know you did well, I probably appreciate it. If there, we have nothing else, John, anything from the audience, nothing else, kind of a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Parky. Councilman Stettler, second, any further discussion, none being all in favor to adjourn this meeting at, uh. What, eight fifty-six, eight fifty-six, we beat nine o'clock, say aye, 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 all the same, motion passed, I'm approved, thank you.